We're on, we're live. Thank you. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here for the public hearing. I'd first like to start off by recognizing that we're meeting on the unceded and traditional territory of the Comox First Nation. During the COVID-19 pandemic, public hearings will be conducted electronically and livestreamed online in accordance with the guidelines of Ministerial Order M 192. This public hearing is being held in accordance with the Local Government Act in order to consider the following proposed bylaw. Bylaw number 604, Rural Comox Valley Official Community Plan Bylaw Number 337, 2014 Amendment Number 5. The Order of Business at this public hearing will proceed as follows. Introduction of the application and a written summary of and a summary of written submissions from the public by CVRD staff. Representation from the public and then questions of directors to the speakers and/or staff. At this public hearing, any person who believes that his or her interests are affected by the proposal shall be given an opportunity to be heard. However, it is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matters contained within the bylaw. You can participate in this public hearing by any of the following ways. By telephone calling 1-778-907-2071 and entering meeting ID 824-3571-1475. Or by Zoom video conference, you can join the meeting electronically by visiting www.comoxvalleyrd.ca/publichearings and clicking on the registration link. After entering your name and email address, you will receive an email with the web link to join the meeting. By emailing your comments to planning@comoxvalleyrd.ca. Please note that email comments must be received before the conclusion of this public hearing. If you are participating via Zoom and are having technical difficulties, please use the Q and A feature to contact staff who will try to assist. If you're participating by telephone, in order to provide oral comments, please press star nine to be placed in the queue. Please note that comments are not being accepted on the CVRD's YouTube channel livestream. When it's your turn to speak and you're called on, please state your name, area of residence, and any organization you may represent, and then give your views on the proposed bylaw. Please be advised that information submitted during the public hearing process will form part of the public record and will be posted on the Comox Valley Regional Website. In order for everyone to have an opportunity to speak, each person's remarks will be limited to three minutes. A digital timer will be displayed on the screen for those watching or participating electronically. All people wishing to speak will be heard a first time, but we will take the supplementary comments which must contain new information from the first time you spoke. Following your presentation, directors may ask questions but are primarily here to listen and will not debate the issues with you. In order for all arguments to be heard, please refrain from any conduct that would intimidate others or discourage them from speaking. After the public hearing is over, all of the information that has been received to date, including the information presented at this public hearing, will be presented to the CVRD Board of Directors. The CVRD Board may, without further notice, make a decision about the proposed bylaw. Copies of all correspondence and referrals received, as well as other pertinent information, is available on the CVRD website. Staff will review any written materials received after that close of the hearing, but these submissions cannot and will not be reviewed by the directors or by the CVRD Board in the course of making a decision on the proposed bylaw. Now then, I would now ask CVRD staff to introduce the application being considered, followed by a summary of any written submissions received prior to this hearing. I believe we have Jody on the line? Jody, if you could just unmute yourself. Thank you. Great, Jody. Great, we can hear you. Go ahead.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hold on a second.
Or maybe we can't hear you.
I'm getting a little scared on my end. If you can't hear me clearly, then I can use my phone call in.
No, it's clear now, I think. We're okay.
Okay. So, to address the commercial cannabis legalization by the federal government in 2018, CVRD is taking a step towards a first amending official community plan policies.
Sorry, Jody.
And then based on the results of that.
Sorry, Jody, I think we might ask you to call in because it's a little bit choppy, so you're coming in and out. Do you mind calling in?
Okay. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just wait for Jody to call in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now I think we can hear you. We might have to up the volume a little bit. Do you want to try now?
Yeah, okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Just give me a second, okay. All right, so should we start now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this bylaw is addressing commercial cannabis cultivation. So to address that as legalized by the federal government back in 2018, the CVRD is taking a two-step approach of first amending the overarching official community plan policies, and then based on that, the results of that, amending the zoning bylaw accordingly. Commercial cannabis cultivation, processing, and sales is currently prohibited within the rural areas of the CVRD. The draft official community plan amendment bylaw here will provide the policy direction for creating regulations to legalize it and to provide direction for staff responding to proposals or applications that are not consistent with those zoning regulations. This draft bylaw will allow zoning regulations to be created to allow for commercial cannabis cultivation in zones where agricultural use or industrial use is permitted with conditions relating to the abatement of orders, emissions, and other nuisance factors. These conditions would be in the form of minimum lot areas or setbacks, so they are not established within residential communities. For context, the federal government's microcategory of cultivation permits a surface area of up to 200 square meters, which is feasible to accomplish in an accessory building in a small residential lot. Please note that local governments are still not able to regulate cultivation of medical cannabis that is still solely with the Health Canada and the RCMP to regulate and enforce. Proposals to locate cannabis not consistent with those conditions, as settled in the zoning bylaw, for example, below the minimum lot areas or within setback areas from neighboring lots, would require a variance permit or a rezoning application. And this bylaw here includes items that may be included in review at the time of such application, including consideration on the effect of adjacent residential uses. Madam Chair.
You can take off. Great, thank you. Now, we don't have an external applicant for the proposed bylaw amendment, so we will now move to presentations from the public. So for those members of the public who would like to make comments, please address the directors and restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw being considered. Whether you're in favor or opposed to any particular application or argument, please be respectful of the directors, CVRD staff, and other members of the public. I'll ask staff to call upon those individuals wishing to speak in the order they were received. And a reminder to please state clearly your name, area of residence, and any organization you may represent, and then give your views on the proposed bylaw. And if you could, please turn off all other audio devices during the live meeting when you're speaking so that we don't have feedback over the phone and over Zoom. All right, so Lisa, who do we have?
So it looks like we have a couple of people attending on Zoom. So if anybody wants to speak, just use the raise your hand function. And if you're having any difficulties, we do have the Q and A function enabled so that you could let me know.
Maybe while we're waiting for folks, I'll read the reminder again of how you can connect with us. So if you are participating late, you can participate by any of the following. You can call 1-778-907-2071 and enter meeting ID number 824-3571-1475. By Zoom, you can join the meeting electronically by visiting the Comox Valley RD website, which is www.comoxvalleyrd.ca/publichearings and click on the registration link. And then after entering your name and email address, you'll receive an email with the web link to join the meeting. And by submitting your comments via email to planning@comoxvalleyrd before the conclusion of this public hearing. So I think I see a hand up. So, Breon, I think you are up in the queue?
Thank you. I'm just thinking clarification. We live on Kentwood Road. We do have a property on ALR and also rural properties on the road. There are some supposedly medical marijuana facilities here that cause health problems, which you said that it's run by the federal government, but we're concerned if your bylaw is going to include inspections, which the federal government did not do to see that people are doing what they said they would be doing. Also, on the clarification end, is there's the big farm on one side and residential on the other side. Would that farm be allowed under the new bylaw to set up a marijuana facility?
Does staff want to speak to that? Yeah, Jody, are you okay to answer that question for clarification?
Yes, hello, you can hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so on the first question about inspections, the CVRD would only inspect those aspects which are being regulated. So if the bylaw comes out with a minimum lot area or setback as the regulation, then the CVRD would inspect those. There's also provision in the building bylaw that does not allow medical cannabis to be counted as farm buildings. So if it is being studied on farmland, it'd have to go into a building permit process.
So what you're saying, even though you're suggesting that effluents are maintained and odors, so we can know when to inspect that, if that was the case?
Not, that's correct, not at the CVRD level. There is federal regulations that address odor. That has to be through the federal government to enforce their regulations.
I'm talking about your new guideline bylaw. If you were to allow it, would you have inspection? It's a federal doesn't, and that's a problem, but with the new bylaw incorporating inspection to make sure that there's no odors or nuisance coming from the facility.
If it becomes permitted use within that property, then it would not undergo regular inspections. The only time that could occur is if it was done through application. If they did not meet the minimum parcel size or they were within a variance area, those permits could include conditions on inspections. On your second question, go ahead.
Go ahead.
On your second question about the farm property, so first of all, our CVRD regulations would have to fall under the inconsistent with the agricultural land reserve regulations, which allow certain types of cannabis cultivation without application. And then beyond that, the CVRD would be allowed to regulate it. CVRD would be allowed to regulate cannabis cultivation within new buildings. So that would be a, that could be a possibility that CVRD would allow cannabis cultivation in buildings.
Even though this is a residential area?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
It would be subject to those minimum lot area and setbacks. So particularly for Kentwood Road, those are long, narrow lots. So in those terms, setbacks would be important.
Breon, did you have any other questions or comments?
I know, not at this time. It's a bit worrisome, what I hear.
Okay, thank you, and it's noted. I've noted, and I think the other directors have heard your concern, so thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak, either on Zoom or by phone or through the Q and A? Oh, great. Okay, so could you state your name and your address, and then you can make your presentation, Scott?
Absolutely. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Scott Weber. My address is 7410 Cougar Smith Road. And I was just wondering what the setbacks were going to be or the proposed setbacks will be and the minimum lot size. And then I also had a question regarding the buildings that you're going to be allowed to grow cannabis commercially in, whether or not they'll need to have plumbing, if the discharge will need to go into proper septic, or if that would be considered like an agricultural waste. Just those specifically.
Great, thank you. Jody?
Hello, yes, you can hear me? Okay. So the specific minimum lot area and setback numbers have not been set yet. Those have been, we've been under consultation with those throughout the entire process hearing from residents where this would be more appropriate and less appropriate. And based on that feedback, we're establishing subsequent resulting minimum lot sizes that address that, that keep it out of residential subdivisions through not only the minimum lot size but the setback. For example, the Kentwood Road is a good example where there are large properties that could meet a minimum lot area but are very narrow, so they could not meet a setback. And in those circumstances, it'd be on a case-by-case basis through a variance or a rezoning application.
Okay.
We've also been consulting with other jurisdictions who have been implementing these regulations and common regulations along those lines are in the neighborhood of one to two hectare minimum lot sizes and 15 to 30 meter setbacks.
Is there, sorry, can I ask another question?
Yes, please.
Is there going to be a difference between the permitting of indoor versus outdoor cultivation in terms of setbacks and anything like that?
In terms of setbacks, no. In terms of minimum lot areas, it could be. That has to be looked at. And not in the agricultural land reserve, that's one of those specifics where that's protected farm use in the agricultural land reserve.
Okay, great, thank you.
On your question about the drainage, yes, a new building would have to be undergo a building permit process, which would require connection to a septic field or waters draining out of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any more questions? Shall I move to questions from directors? Should we think? Okay, so I think, you know, if anybody else would like to join in with questions, we can do so, but I'm going to move the public hearing forward and ask any of the other directors who are both zoomed in, if they have any questions of any particular speaker or of the staff. Directors should limit themselves to seeking clarification or additional information directly related to the project under question and should avoid engaging in debate on the merits of the proposal.
Danielle here.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you, and I want to thank Breon and Scott for their comments and questions. And I saw some more in the package as well, and had some engagement in area a little bit around this issue, so I think they're all valid points. I think that indeed the size and the setbacks will be something that we'll have to carefully consider. My question, perhaps for the benefit of those joining us today and myself and fellow directors, is if staff can explain the next steps and sort of process that might be undertaken to finalize some of those considerations and eventually turn them into a bylaw. Did you get that?
We heard that.
It showed to hear, you want me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so the next step is this bylaw amendment, if we're in the policies, will go to the regional board for consideration of adoption. If it's not adopted, if there's direction to go a different direction, we would do that. If it is adopted, as is, we would proceed with a and the next step would be to put together a zoning amendment bylaw to enable regulations along the lines consistent with these policies to allow the cannabis cultivation in zones that have agricultural use permitted or industrial use permitted, and to come up with those those conditions, most likely a minimum lot area and a setback. And those may be different based on different zones, the residential zones versus agricultural zones versus industrial zones. And with that, that report and options will be presented to the Superior Area Services Committee for consideration. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up. And that does clarify it, thank you. My follow-up is whether it would be appropriate to hear some of staff comments or feedback on, because I see we received the referrals back on all these as well. And I was particularly interested in the ministry's feedback on our proposed regulation where they showed a concern about the level of regulation, which they felt may be too much of what we are proposing. Does staff have any comments to make today on this or maybe in the future?
Yes, hon or Lisa, I can see the screen there. Could you bring up, if it's possible, can you bring up those comments in the agency referral and responses item? Oh, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Do you know what page you're looking for, Jody?
The Ministry of Agriculture comments. So they're responding from the point of view of cannabis cultivation being on agricultural land reserve. And so those are going to have a separate set of regulations that are going to be have to be applicable to ALR land that are consistent with the Agricultural Land Commission regulations. It might be different than what comes up for residential zone lots. They're also pointing out that second policy in there that's addressing information that may be requested at the time of application. So the bylaw, the policies in this bylaw is basically staged where there's that first policy has these are the circumstances where cannabis cultivation may be permitted use. And that's without application, it's just a permitted use. And then the second policy, which is what the Ministry of Agriculture is more looking at, where it includes information requirements and such things as rainwater management, waste management, and other items there. Those are those items where we're going to look at on a case-by-case basis based on applications when people are proposing cannabis cultivation on areas that are under the minimum lot size or within a setback or in a zone that just otherwise doesn't allow. or within a setback or in a zone that just otherwise doesn't allow for it. If there is a particular one there, please let me know and I can respond to it. A particular comment from the ministry I can respond to.
No, thank you. There was, I mean, a couple of them, I may have questions further down, like number four, when they talk about how we would look at community cumulative impacts and whether we would have the jurisdiction to do this. I think those are valid questions. So it'd be nice to see some more detailed answers from us as we consider these regulations. But I think you provided a good overview of each of their points. Yeah, thank you so, thank you, Jody.
I'd like to point out, the cumulative impacts one is something that came out of the early consultation on this. There's a broad port out there for cannabis cultivation in general. But there was, we heard concerns about multiple facilities being located on one area. And the effects can be cumulative on us in terms of impacts to neighbors.
If I may, were these concerns specifically tied to odor or to other elements as well? Such as, you know, land and flow impacts?
More towards odor emissions.
That makes sense, thank you. So I guess staff will further consider that aspect and maybe have some communication with ministry? Or do we have examples of how other jurisdictions have addressed that?
No, this would need some consideration of how we're going to review this policy.
Okay, thank you.
Director Greve, I see your hand up.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm just directing this to Jody. Just to be absolutely clear that the most problematic circumstances we face as elected officials is around medical marijuana being grown in appropriate neighborhoods. And as I understand what you're saying, we have no referral from the federal government, nor do we have any jurisdiction over those medical marijuana facilities. Am I correct?
That is Jody here. That is correct. Those examples have been very useful in drafting regulations. We have years of links to refer to when we're looking at drafting regulations for legalization.
Director Greve, did you catch that? Were you able to hear that?
Yeah, more or less. But I just want to make it absolutely clear that the biggest problems we have, we still have absolutely nothing to say over. We can talk about new regulations around legal recreational cannabis growth, growing. But we have nothing to say over the problematic areas we have already. I want to make that clear for the public because I think it's important that we don't raise false hopes. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question to staff. Jody, I know you've mentioned already about inspections and that under this bylaw there wouldn't be, apart from the initial inspection of setbacks, that there's no inspections to see if proper odor controls are made. But we still have the ability under our odor bylaw that if there are odors in the, that, you know, a facility is emitting, that they could be referred to our bylaw enforcement folks? Is that my, is that your understanding?
Yes, correct. There is, my law that addresses an option orders and based on complaint. So it needs at least two people to submit a complaint. And the bylaw inspector would go and review the veracity of those complaints and take appropriate action.
Okay, so I hope that that might address some of Ms. Petrell's comments about the worry over odors, that even though it's not covered under this bylaw, it is covered under our nuisance bylaw?
Hi, Director Humira, I just wanted to follow up on Jody's answer there. I had a chance to speak to Amanda, the manager of body compliance, about enforcement of orders in what relate to cannabis or medical marijuana. And the comments that I received from Amanda was it's difficult to figure out where the smell comes from sometimes because there could be numerous properties that are growing their cannabis. So it's sometimes will be hard to pinpoint exactly if this facility is, is there a full corporate of creating on the smell or is it a number of facilities making this, creating this odor?
Thank you for that clarification. Directors, do you have any second questions that have come up?
I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm fine as well, thank you.
So we're potentially closing down. So this is going to be now the final call for public input. And that includes anybody who's still on Zoom, if you do have another comment or question. So the final call for public input, including verbal and electronic submissions. Once the hearing is declared to be terminated, there are no additional submissions accepted. So I do see a hand up, Mr. Weber?
Hi, Scott Weber here again. I just wanted to kind of make note that when your, people are growing their medical cannabis, the facilities aren't inspected by anybody. And quite often they're outdoors, so they do have a lot of smell. And because they don't get inspected, they don't necessarily have to have, or they don't necessarily put in odor control in the buildings. But when you apply for a micro cultivation license, they do come and they ask for a package of pictures and videos to prove that you're meeting the odor control requirements and the other requirements of the license. And they do have ongoing inspections for the commercial facilities.
Thank you for that. Okay. So following the close of the meeting, the directors will not be able to speak with members of the public about matters discussed at this hearing. So please refrain from contacting any directors after the public hearing to discuss the matter. If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to discuss them with the staff members, the CVRD staff members. Your cooperation is very much appreciated. So I'm going to call a second time for any further submissions. And I will call a third and final time for any further submissions regarding this proposed bylaw. Okay, hearing and seeing none, I now declare this public hearing terminated. Thank you very much for everyone who participated. Thank you, directors.
Good job, Madam Chair.